Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting on September 7th, 2021. We got quite the agenda. Also have Zoe from StanTech doing a presentation for us today on the OCP. So we're going to jump right into it. Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda. One second.
Thank you, and thank you. Any questions?
Worship number seven, it says admin report should be admin report regarding naming of the municipal services building.
Sorry. It's all that too. Wrong color ink.
Yeah.
Okay, so could I please have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any more questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, number two, adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of August 17th, 2021.
I'll make that motion to got those minutes.
Thank you, councillor Slager.
One second.
Thank you councillor Levante. Any questions? All in favor? Carrie. Adopt the minutes from the special meeting of August 31st, 2021.
That we adopt the minutes from the special meeting of August 31st.
Thank you councillor.
I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Slager.
I have a note councillor Levante is marked as present and she was unable to attend due to technical difficulties. So that's all. Otherwise, I'm in favor.
Carried. All right. Number four, we have Zoe Morrison from StanTech. Hello Zoe.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
And thank you very much. Nice to, nice to see you.
Yeah, nice to see you all too. Um, it's a nice evening here in Whitehorse. Hopefully it's nice in Watson Lake. I wish I was there in person. It's always better. But thank you for giving me some time today. I have a presentation. I think it's not very long. I was just going to kind of go over the OCP as you see it now with highlighting some of the changes and the, you know, a little bit about the process and, and what's changed. So I'm going to share my screen. So can you see that?
Uh, no.
Okay, let me try again.
There you go. Yep.
Okay, great. So just let me know if you have any questions as we go through. But I'll talk briefly about the process and then some of the goals of the OCP update and then just a quick overview of the, of the updates. So as you know, we kicked off the project in February 2020. We had 120 people completed that first online survey that was open from February until March. We completed a background report that pulled together information from various sources to support the, the updating of the plan. And then we had been coming, planning to come down in April for a, you know, a community planning week, which obviously we didn't do at that time. So we worked with the focus group between May and October. We had, had five meetings and then a sixth in October. So using the information that we gathered through that initial community engagement and working with the focus group, we developed a draft of the OCP and the zoning bylaw. And then I came in October 2020 to present that to council. And then nearly a full year later, we were back about three weeks ago in, or, or so to, to host some final engagement meetings, which we did. And then, I mean, as you know, there's been a number of, of steps in the LFN outreach department. So I'm, I'm not going to go into the details here because I know you're all kind of more familiar with, with where we're at with that. Um, so the goals of the update were to, you know, to make a readable, easy to implement official community plan. To keep non-conformance to a minimum. So there was, you know, no desire to make huge changes that would, that would put a bunch of uses into non-conformance. From that first survey that we did in 2020, the, the priorities from people were listed below here. There are, obviously there was more things that we heard, but these were the things that kind of rose to the top in terms of importance. So you know, a preference for infill and service development. Looking at ways to, to strengthen, develop, unify the downtown. There was lots of comments about the highway, sort of the gateways to the community and wanting to see that area beautified. Again, focusing on infill rather than developing new commercial areas. People wanted to see enhanced streetscaping. So you know, connections, sidewalks, signs, that sort of thing. And then it was clear that people really value the trails, parks, playgrounds, that sort of thing. A number of the changes that we made, I, I call housekeeping changes where they're not, you know, changing the maps or the meaning of the plan, but you know, we've updated the formatting, obviously added photos. There's now a table of contents, an introduction, a community profile. We also, you know, the OCP is, is made up of two pieces. One is the map with the designations and one is the document. And now in the document, you'll see a description of each of those designations along with the types of uses you expect to see in those sections. So that's new as well. So one of the things we did was update the, this, the, the vision. So the first, the previous OCP is that first vision and the second one lower down on the page is, is the new vision. So we've added a couple of ideas and words to get to, to reflect the things we heard at the community discussions. Related to the vision are the goals. So these are fairly straightforward, but provide some detail about things that are important to the town and to the residents. Just, you know, wanting to be a welcoming community, maintaining that role as service center. That economic piece, so wanting a stable and diversified economy. Being a good land steward and protecting the environment. And then supporting orderly development while maintaining the small town atmosphere. And, and then showcasing local First Nations culture and history. So those are the goals. As you'll know from looking at the, the plan, there are a number of sections. So they're listed here in this black box and each one has a description of the current situation, some long-term goals, and then a series of actions. So one of the things that we did and we worked with, with council and the focus group on last fall was to update the action. So you know, some of the actions in the existing plan were completed, so they were removed. And we've tried to to provide a bit more focus. So I think we've cut down the number of actions. And in the current plan, there's some priorities applied to them. So I mean, obviously how the actions are tackled are going to depend on the priorities of staff and council and things may not follow that, that priority list, but just giving a sense of like which ones could be done sooner and then which ones are more five to 10 years out. Oops, sorry. So a piece of the planning involved updating the maps. So you can see the maps have, have, have been updated. They're a little bit simpler. One of the things I, I think in the old maps, you know, it has parks and institutional uses set out in the it doesn't, in the desert land use designations. And, and for me, I like to see a more generalized area like on shown here on the new map where, you know, this is a residential area. We understand that not every single lot is going to be a house, but, but they're going to be uses that go along with residential. So you know, playgrounds, churches, trails, schools, those all fit in residential neighborhoods. So we've clarified that in the text and then simplified the maps. So here's a a screenshot of the of the designations as they sit now. I will just, I'm not going to talk about each change, but I will go through and highlight some of the things that are most, some of the changes that are most noteworthy. So one of them in terms of residential uses, this area here for expansion, north of Nahani and Francis Avenue was expanded. You know, we, we don't intend that this whole area is going to be developed as residential right away, but just giving more flexibility and more space for that future development. Cause this is really the main area where service development will take place. So that's one change. Um, these two pockets of, of country residential or unserviced development are shown. So the, the ski hill area as well as that area off Thompson or adjacent to Thompson. So again, it doesn't mean you're going to see like lots throughout this whole area, but that, those are areas where, where we expect to see some unserviced residential. Here we've added some unserviced, so country residential across the highway from Owl Lake. And in the previous version down south of the rodeo grounds was shown as residential and that's Yukon government looked at that area and deemed it not, you know, not a suitable or desirable area to develop. I think because of the it's the terrain. I think it's not, it's not flat. So those are the residential areas. I will say a couple of things. We asked specifically about each of the potential residential areas in that survey we did in, in a year ago. And people, you know, people are generally for developments, see the need to develop lots, both serviced and unserviced. The ones that got the most, like I think this is a great place to develop are the in-town ones. So the Nahani and the Francis Avenue. People, there wasn't like one that people loved over other potential areas. The ski hill was one that people seemed to have the most concerns about. So it was sort of lower on the list in terms of like which one people, people liked or wanted to see developed. So another set of changes are related to the commercial areas. So you can see here on this map, there are two, two commercial areas. One is a downtown commercial area. So this pink color. And then the turquoise color is mixed use zone, a mixed use commercial zone. So that's different in the existing OCP. You see a lot more different, you know, it, it more so reflects the zoning of each of those lots. So this is a much more generalized. You know, in, we expect that community wide uses, key visitor services are going to be in the downtown area. And sort of supporting smaller retail residential, like industrial uses are going to be in the, that turquoise mixed use zone. And then we, so we came in August. I, a few of you, we got to talk to and then I think others were out of town. And we, we spoke with about 20 people through that evening meeting and then we had open houses as well. We also had a survey that about 21 people completed. So this slide just has a few of the things that we heard when we were speaking with people or through the comments in the survey. People want to see a focus on action. So you know, enforcing the existing bylaws, taking care of the town, you know, the town's property, the potholes, the signs. A couple of people who we spoke with and who wrote in on the survey highlighted again how important it is to work with LFN and want to see LFN consulted before moving forward and, and you know, just highlighting the importance of collaborative planning. There was a couple of comments about the importance of wildfire protection planning. And then some comments about the importance of signs, sidewalks, connections downtown. There were one or two people who wrote in saying that they were unsatisfied with the public engagement options. And that the outreach or notice wasn't sufficient for them. And then, you know, there were comments about the residential development. Again, I think it's like overall people are not against development. The, the Thompson Drive and the ski hill areas both, you know, residents have concerns and want a chance to look at those designs and ask some questions and make sure that yeah, they, they want more information basically about, about those two developments. And that's, that's my summary. Maybe I'll turn the presentation off. Hopefully that wasn't too repetitive for those who saw the presentation when I was there. Are there any questions or comments?
I will just say thank you very much Zoe. It's been a long time coming to this point, you know, it's been drawn out a little bit and we appreciate your dedication to it. There was a, you know, like a, just a comment is that we have had the similar comments about engagement. It's just been a tough time to engage. I don't think it's any of anybody's fault. I think that it's just the way the world is right now. So appreciate it. We appreciate your efforts and endeavor in it anyways. So, so, so thank you.
It's always, you know, engagement is tough and it, it's, you know, sometimes it's the time of year or even in you're going up against a hockey game or it's a beautiful night in a weak frame. There's a lot of things that become more important in people's lives than, than, you know, coming to learn about the OCP. But I, I do, you know, I do have, I have definitely experienced the way, if you're doing something that people are really worried about or angry about, you will get, you know, people will come, come to your meetings and will provide comments. So.
Um, is there any questions from council?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
So you know, again, we really appreciate all your hard work. I know that it's been a long time coming and we're excited. We're, as you know, ending, coming to the end of our term. And we really want to see this completed. So that's our, that's our goal. You know, we've had some difficulties, several. So, so yeah, just thank you. That's all I can say. We really appreciate what you've done and I, and the changes that you've made, I, I think are suitable. And I, I also like that it, the map is simplified and I like that the, you know, it's more of a written description of actions and I appreciate that. So that's about it. That's all I have. And council is good. So I'm just going to say thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm, I guess we'll, we'll be bringing the zoning bylaw draft forward. Cam, Cam will tell me when he wants to bring that forward. That will, that will follow.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much Zoe. Okay. So we're moving right along. A motion to pay the open payables in the amount of $312,538.68.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Good councillor Levante. Thank you councillor Henshaw. Any questions?
Yeah, Union Tractor, what was that about?
Just bear with me a second.
135.
The number is it on the left, Trump?
Can't find it now.
Uh, Union Tractor, 14,046.
Yeah.
Union Tractor was, is greater plates. And on chief, probably by years supplying.
I have a question. Vote. Check. Hang on one second, sorry. 59670. I just thought that company was not operational.
Six.
Six, seven, zero.
They, they actually, are we, we dealt with, they're sending that with us. That is us renting an excavator to do a dig because ours' motor was gone and there was no other excavators available in the community to rent.
I just didn't think that was that.
Anymore.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
They're in the process of trying to.
Any other questions? All in favor? Carrie. Okey dokey. Mr. Lockwood.
Oh, Mike, I'm already.
Please.
So I'm dealing with lands, lands ranch regarding the development agreement for the France Avenue lots. It's to get the groundwork in place. So that way that when things are sorted out, the development can proceed, but the tender documents are ready. And they're looking at releasing them in the spring based on, we've lost this construction season anyways. So their, their plan is to have the documents out so that the work would be able to start since the snow goes. Apparently Yukon government and the Art First Nation apparently had a meeting last week. I haven't been updated on what it was, but I was told it was very productive, but they only spoke about Francis Avenue. So that is where we're at on that side of the lands part. So best and first Casca and Casca Forest Resources are working on a proposal for the solar farm. Which would be at the former Casca Forest Resources property, which is the 31 acre solar farms that they're looking at. So they've, they've been back and forth with us about their development proposal on that. And so it's still ongoing. We've had discussions with them regarding their cultural center as well on the former Watson Lake Hotel property. And it was just, they've assigned or hired somebody new to work on it from their end. So we're just having discussions as to where we were at based on our previous conversations regarding that property. And so it was more of a history lesson for their new consultant or whatever that they've hired. So that project, we'll see where it goes from there because there's so many, as you know, there's so many pieces of the pie. There's Yukon government, there's the town, there's the LFN. I'm pleased to say that we are no longer the owners of the Lakeview Apartments. As of last Thursday at midnight, it became the property of Yukon government, Yukon housing corp. And their tender document is out and closing, I believe this week for the demolition of the Lakeview Apartments. And their plan is to move ahead as fast as they can get things solidified. So they're moving the right direction. I met with them last Tuesday. We, we changed the locks. anticipation for that transition and it's nice to have it off our books as a liability. So which is good. And and as you've probably seen on Facebook, swimming pool is working awesome. Swimming lessons are in very well received. We actually had to schedule a second session because there was so much input or requests for swimming lessons. Morning swims, there's a couple of people going to the six thirty morning swims and then and then the schools are actually using the, the swimming pool in the afternoons. And then followed with public swim, swimming lessons and then follows up three days a week with aqua fitness, which is got, I believe, sitting around the eight or nine people attending. So, which is very nice. And we're going to try and just laws of mother nature holds, we're going to keep that door open over there. So.
Cool.
Nice.
The other thing that's going ahead this week, or not this week, the week of the 20th is the testing of the district heat system. So we've got two different consultant groups coming in. Or one, our consultant, Clean Energy, who presented to us before, they did the report. And so they're coming to town and along with two substrates to do scoping of the pipe. So some of the work will, we're going to attempt to do some cameraing, but we're thinking that the they're not going to be successful. So the other thing they're doing is putting an electronic charge in the pipe. So we can actually locate the pipe. And then we'll be doing some non-destructive daylighting of the pipe and then x-ray to check out wells and joints on the pipe to see where it is. And as part of that, we'll actually be mapping out the exact location by putting the electronic charge in. It'll actually be able to pinpoint exactly where the piping is, which we don't have an as-built drawing for the piping. So that's rather good. And we're still moving ahead with the discussions with YG regarding, and the hospital corp regarding possibilities of the expansion and down that way and chasing those funding envelopes. So it's been rather hectic on that side. Even like rather busy getting our director of operations up to speed and he's making some really good progress on our health and safety and fleet stuff right now. And as part of that, our first piece of equipment for liquidation is on, is on the web for sale. And the links are on our Facebook page and also our website. And we've actually got one bid on the first piece of equipment. We, we put the former garbage dump truck on as the test piece. And to see how it works. And so far we've got a bid on it, which is nice. And the rest of the equipment for liquidation will be going on over the next few weeks.
Cool.
So I think that's it for now. There's spots.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks Cam. Sounds like lots happening. Appreciate it. Uh, so moving on to the municipal service building survey and a recommendation from administration. If you guys have had a chance to read that, I'll read the recommendation. To leave the name of the building as the town of Watson Lake Municipal surfaces and incorporate a casket translation that reflects the use of the building into the signage.
Thoughts? I love it. I also love it.
Okay.
I'm on board with it. I'm talking with the people in Watson Lake and I said, if you name it after one person, the problem that you run with that is everyone thinks it should have been named after a different person. And you know, it, it just was, who would be that person? So the phrase or saying that goes for the, what the building is used for in the area, I think was more fitting. So.
Good. I think they did a lovely job, was done by admin on the report. I think it really reflected how important we think this project is. And I am just really pleased with the recommendation and like to make a motion to accept it. I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Levante. Thank you councillor Henshaw. Any more questions, comments? All in favor? Carried. Municipal services building and we'll get the casket translation. There's something to follow with that again, a number.
Correspondence?
Yeah, it's under correspondence from the Udeno council. So. Yeah, it's under correspondence from the Udeno Council. So yeah, it'll kind of fall in line with that, which is great. Okay. Moving right along, uh, the propane fuel contract. We had one submission, I believe. I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the single contract submission.
Thank you, council Levante.
I'll second that.
Thank you, council Henshaw. Any questions?
They keep saying gallons and not liters. I don't know, it's just.
Um.
Well, I think.
I mean. To determine on what you guys are getting. We could, it seems like you guys get a good deal and we get ripped off.
I mean.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is quite a deal, so.
They just put the amount that we use in gallons, which he just times it by four, John, but I hope you know that.
I haven't heard gallons for so long.
So, uh, there has to be a, uh, motion from council on the fixed rate or the variable.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Yeah, sorry about that. So if you could amend your motion, council Levante.
I, sorry, I will amend my motion to accept the fixed rate for one year.
Thank you, councillor Levante.
I'll second that.
Thank you, council Henshaw.
Thank you.
Any questions? All favor. Carrie. Thanks, Carrie. Okay, moving right along. Uh, the third and final reading of bylaw twenty-one oh nine, the council indemnities bylaw.
My question.
Thank you, councillor Slager.
One second.
Thank you, council Levante. Any more questions?
No.
All favor. Carrie. Uh, the first reading of bylaw twenty-one ten being a bylaw to adopt a revised official community plan.
I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of the revised official community plan.
Thank you, councillor Slager.
I'll second that.
Thank you, council Henshaw. Any questions?
So that go, when it goes to second reading, we should have a public meeting yet or?
Yeah, we do the second, then we do a public and then we do the final.
Last time we had that's when it all blew up and.
No, we, we've done the first reading. We've never got to this point of the official community plan at this term.
So, yeah, so your worship, so the, uh, the public hearing will be at the first meeting in October. And then that would be followed by the second reading.
Okay, sorry.
Second reading can't be completed until after the public hearing.
Okay.
And the reason that it's set until October, the first meeting in October is because there has to be, uh, twenty-one days after the first reading and it's going to be advertised.
What's the date on that again, sorry?
I believe it's October. Yeah.
Sorry.
I think it's October fifth. It is October.
Thanks, Cam.
Sorry, I thought it was for second public. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, councillor Slager and councillor Henshaw. Was it?
Yes.
Any other questions? Carrie. Uh, the RFP for twenty-one oh three Campbell Block site leveling. Believe we only had, we had two submissions. Questions, comments, motion?
I, I.
Why don't you go ahead, Cam?
Okay, I, I can speak on your worship.
Yeah.
So, um, the, the, the leveling of the former Campbell Block property was something that was carried over from the demolition. It's gas tax funded. Um, we still have our gas tax money in place for the, for the final leveling of the property. Uh, it was advertised the first go around and no bidders submitted. We advertised it a second time, uh, feedback came, the, the reasoning that there was no submission because we had a, we'd originally included a bonding in it for the, for the, for the contract. Um, so nobody was willing for the dollar amount. They weren't willing to put in a bonding on it. It just, it was going to cost them too much. So we looked at it again. We put it, extended it the second, the third time with cash deposit. And hence we got the two submissions, both are local, uh, both local companies. And, um, hence the recommendation for the lowest, um, the lowest bid, which is Northern Environmental Services at the price of forty-four thousand, four forty. And, uh, compared to Iain Kachika contracting, who submitted a bid of fifty-three thousand, nine, nine, nine. All bids are compliant and recommended by our project manager, Colliers, uh, project manager.
Thank you, Cam. Any discussion?
Really, that's a contract for sure. Like if they run into artifacts or any, any chance for extras in there or?
No, it's a leveling. It's, it's building up. We're not digging down. So it's, it's by, in the contract.
Oh, okay.
How much material elevations and everything was all laid out in that contract.
Yeah, and that's just basically like a lot of crap. It's not. It's crap.
It's, it's putting a lift on, uh, doing site grading, so drainage and removing the concrete areas over to the, to the east side of the property.
Okay.
Which will open that up, that whole property.
Yeah.
Our source.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to award the contract to Northern Environmental Services. I'll second.
Thank you, council Henshaw and councillor Levante. Any more questions?
Not for me.
Agreed.
All in favor? Agreed. Thank you. So the next is the RFP for the Northern Light Center roof replacement. If I'm not mistaken, it's our situation with.
Yes, your worship, I can speak to that as well.
Okay.
Um, yes, that tender was, that tender was in the same situation. It was put out, um, first time. Uh, no submissions to it. Extended the second time and no submissions. Third time, we actually broadened the scope of, uh, the, the area for what we had originally submit, uh, researched through Colliers and we received one submission, which was compliant. And it is by CIMS Limited Partnership and they are based out of Kidmat, BC. And they submitted, uh, compliant, um, price of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five seventy-two eighty-six. Our original, uh, uh, budgetary estimate on that job was a hundred and thirty thousand, so it is under, um, our estimate. I, I personally spoke to two roofing companies in the Yukon about why they did not submit bids. And they said that they are fully, um, mucked up for this year and they were listed, anybody would look at it be next year. But they've been turning down work. Um, actually Yukon government canceled the reshingling of the airport terminals as well because of the fact that there wasn't, um, companies available to do the work. And, uh, I can confirm that this work, it, it would be nice to see it done this year because I was at the Northern Light Center this morning and there's shingles from the high wind. You know, shingles laying in the parking lot from the building. So be nice to have this done this year and.
I'd like to accept the NLC roof replacement bid from CIMS Limited Partnership.
Thank you, councillor Slager.
I'll second that.
Thank you, council Henshaw. Any questions? All in favor? Carrie. Uh, next is the Watson Lake Recreation Advisory Committee submissions. And I believe we need a motion to accept. What is presented?
Make a motion to accept the message as presented.
Thank you, councillor Slager.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Henshaw. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I don't know, like the, the, well, I guess the curling club should have put in a request because the, the rocks need sharpenings.
They just need to apply, John. They just need to apply.
That's through lotteries.
That's through the, this group. Yes, you can pick up the, uh, application at the town office or the rec center. If the, if the curling club owns them.
If the town owns them, that's the problem.
Okay, so then. But you could probably just ask Alyssa and she would do it.
I, I, your, your worship, I actually spoke to the club president about the funding out, uh, uh, areas that were available and he was aware of it. He said that just, they weren't ready for it. So, um, we, we just discussed different, uh, options available for the curling clubs.
So I think the only thing that I really want to impress upon, I know it's not anybody's fault at all and maybe there's some creative way that administration can think of a way to make sure that the people who are taking applications are reading the guidelines. We had a couple of applications in here. You guys, I'm sure saw in the minutes where they got turned down for like the most simple thing that it says very clearly in the guidelines that are not eligible. I don't know how to get people to read them, but people are so upset when they get turned down, but it's like literally. Like if there's something really plain language that said like, this is what's covered. There is, there is. The guidelines is in such plain language. I don't know if there is a way to just, I don't want to say like, Carrie, oh, highlight it. And like, that's obviously unreasonable, but my goodness, I also hate seeing any of this money being sent back to lotteries because it's being unused. And like the ones that are have been said no to in this are like, like there is no, it's all very clean. It's all very easy to decipher. It is the easiest thing in the world to apply for and still we're turning people down and it just really sucks. Frankly.
Your worship, yeah, I don't, from administration, I don't know how much simpler we can make it.
I know.
And we, and we, and Alyssa is available to talk to everybody about their applications and people don't take advantage of it.
I know.
So I don't know how, like, I honestly don't know anything we could do better to make it.
We even as a group held a workshop on how to apply and what is available. And we did have people come out and I'm, I'm not saying that there is like any kind of due diligence not being done like, but maybe we can put our collective heads together. Like, I don't know if we can post them on the Facebook page. Like, I don't know.
I was thinking the workshop, you know, like getting during application time, like bring it to the workshop.
Totally. And we literally, we were helping people fill them out and that went, all went really well. But we're just like, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, but you'll see in the minutes that it says like ineligible expenses.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just my only comment.
My recollection is correct, there's, uh, there's probably a significant amount of money still available.
Well, that was.
About fifteen grand?
That was the first intake of the year, so.
There's still, uh, still more, there's still.
There's still two tips, or sorry, one to two applications for this year. That's the first one of the year.
Okay.
That's just intake. Oh, yeah. No, it, it ends March thirty-first is the end of the fiscal.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, so we got one more to go.
So that was, so August is the first one. January is the second. And then if there's money left over, we're hoping that we'll be able to do another one in February.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause normally we do them in March. We do one in August and one in March. But it makes no sense for Alyssa because that's at the end of her year. I mean, you see in the minutes what it says there.
Yeah.
We're going to do one, try and do one August or not try. If you guys approve it, we're going to do one in August. We're doing January. And then if there's money left over, a special one in February to try and make sure that we're using every penny that we have.
And we jump in various groups.
Yes, but this is a really big issue. People use doing ineligible expenses or then spending the money on ineligible expenses. And we don't know how much money is actually physically left in the account.
Can you refresh my memory with regards to tra, it's for a team or a group traveling, they'll cover food for them or, but they won't cover the travel or vice versa?
Um, it is, they will pay, um, they will pay, I think, your mileage, a portion of your mileage. And it depends, you have to have a certain amount of people in your car. If you're going from a team, like each individual person can't just travel. But literally the guidelines is one page and it is.
Guys, I'm thinking volleyball team as well.
Very, very simple. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
All in favor? All right.
Oh, and I just want to remind you guys that we'll be looking for another counselor for this, this position for the next meeting.
Thanks, councillor Levante. Any more questions? All in favor? Carrie. All right, why do electric charging station? It's on here because it was asked to be on here.
Yeah, well, I just feel like we needed, we didn't ever make a motion, make a motion or decision on that. So, um, I think that you have asked us a question about where.
Yeah, well, so there's two potential sites that are an option. You know, it, it, the Yukon government's going to put one in Watson Lake. I think that's what the, that's where there was some miscommunication. They're going to put one in Watson Lake. It could be either on one of our municipal buildings or it will be at a government building. So, I mean, the end of the day, it wouldn't be a horrible thing for us to have. You know, I would hate to see it put at the public, like, you know, we just don't have any choice if it goes to them. So I, I would prefer to have it as one of our amenities as opposed to one of YG's amenities.
Your worship, I can give you an update on that. As of last week, YG was pricing out having the, the charging station, uh, installed at property management.
Okay.
And that was the only location that they were looking at as a YG possibility.
Okay.
So, uh, location that property management, as you know, isn't very.
Not.
I just don't want to be seen as complicit in this political brouhaha to be making it look like we're making green choices, but we're not. So since the last time we spoke about, spoke about this, I have gone through our community and spoken to somebody from just about every single clique in this community to see if I could get any support for this project and not a single person that I spoke to thought this, this was something that we should be in favor of or supporting in any way. So I would make a motion to decline their request and say that anytime that they are willing to put an actual renewable project in Watson Lake, I would be happy to vote yes.
Okay. Motion on the table.
That's obviously the guy's not giving up.
Sorry?
You just said that they're, they picked their spot. That's what you just said.
Yeah, what, what I said, your worship, is that, yeah, if it's not going, if it's, there's one, YG is going to install one in town. And they're currently being their, their initial conversations with, with, when they presented to council, they said if there was an appetite for it to be on a municipal property, they would put it at a YG property. And the prop, YG property they're looking at right now is the property management building. Uh, so they're going to, they're going to install it no matter what.
If they're giving out free electricity, it should be to the residents of Watson Lake. We pay really high rates. I'm not. Let that be on their own political conscience.
I, I mean, between the, there are two options of the town office here or the Northern Light Center. And because it takes about fifteen to twenty minutes to even to charge, uh, anything. And so I, I look at it as we could solve the show. Cause there's not too many people in town that have an electric charging. If they do, chances are they're charging at home. These will be mostly tourists that are coming through. It's the summer months. And I feel that we can lure them to our services by having, uh, you know, while you're waiting for your car to get charged, you might as well go watch the show by Watson Lake. So the Northern Light Center would be my choice.
Counselor.
Now I am in agreement with councillor Levante, um, if, as far as like choosing a municipal, um, location, if we had to pick one, I would also be in favor of the Northern Light Center. Um, although I do not think it should be free. It's going to be though, so we have a motion on the table. Second or third. Sorry.
There's either a motion on the table or I need another motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to put the uh, YG electric charging station located at the Northern Light Center.
I'll second.
Any more questions? We'll have to vote all in favor. Three, four. Unopposed? Okay, thank you, council. I, I would, we, we, we should stipulate and also comment on that as saying that we will encourage private enterprise to take on this endeavor. See, you know, as, as developments happen and we should pursue like some sort of compensation for power. We are, you know, I mean.
I can't wait to plug in my phone. There, I'm good plugging in everything there. I can't wait. I'm going to charge up every battery. I hope everybody in Watson Lake does.
But it's.
It's ridiculous.
But it's something we'll keep an eye on and we'll definitely follow up with. But it's something we'll keep an eye on and we'll definitely follow up with. But I do believe that, you know, it is, it, I understand where you're coming from, Council of Monte and I have heard similar comments, it is just one more thing to add to the community. It's the, it's a growing way of transportation as much as it is diesel powered, electric.
They all run on gas.
I know. Takes diesel to build those batteries too, so anyways. Okay, sorry, Deli, sorry, yeah, sorry. Okay. So we'll move along, uh, the R C M P policing reports. Any questions or comments?
I think this is my favorite format that they provided, um, I hope that maybe they'll be able to put it all into a document next time, but, um, thank you for the thoughtful and thorough report, yeah, it was very good, I appreciate you reading it.
Your worship, the reason there, we got so many in this goal is because it was a backlog. So now that they're in sync with this new reporting system, that, um, it might change, but this is something that they're trying right now.
Cool, maybe we can have him come and present on his, uh, new reporting system and give us an idea how that's going and now that we can have people in the, uh, in the gallery, be nice to have them come in, like face to face.
Your worship, I can ask him to come to the October fifth.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, counselor open forum. John, you have any questions?
Yeah, well, I'm at, uh, back to the curling thing. Okay, so town walls, the, the rocks, now the curling club has money. Can they come to some settlement with town, um, having those rocks sharpened?
I guess it would be a proposal from curling club to the town.
I guess it's something that the curling club needs to bring forward to the recreation managers, so we know there's an issue that they need to be sharpened.
Oh, so we gotta talk to, we gotta talk to Alyssa then?
Yes, if I, if I, if we don't know that need to be sharpened, then we can't budget for it. Because if it's our, if there are stones, then yes, it's our O and M on that, right?
So we, we could make a donation to the town, a conditional donation.
They would just do it, John, you just have to ask them and they'll put it in their budget.
Yeah, but I don't know. If, if, if the curling club is willing to donate something, that is fine, but we, as you know, we can't budget for something we don't know about.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, I'm in the same boat, then there's a curling club meeting on the sixteenth, but I'm gonna go to the bush and do my favorite job for a while also.
Okay.
I won't be there, so I gotta talk to Pat about it, I just wanna.
Yeah. Yep. Yes, sir.
Good.
I don't think I have anything, just go there.
Karen?
Nope.
What? Counselor Slater?
I'm on the internet.
None at this time.
Okay. I don't have any comments at this time. Uh, I guess we'll move right to gallery open forum.
I'm sorry, your worship, we have the correspondence.
Sorry, I missed one, I missed number fifteen, sorry, skipped right over that. Thank you, Counselor Henter. Dear Dana Council, municipal signage, I have it here and I'll read it, I'm going to write this. Uh, dear Mayor Irvin, on a recent trip to, that's a tough one.
Kamloops.
Thank you, we saw the use of a language on signs and even some local businesses throughout the city of Kamloops. I felt that this was a wonderful demonstration of inclusivity and partnership with the First Nation. I would love the opportunity to speak with you about exploring a similar project in Watson Lake by including Casca language in public signage throughout the town of Watson Lake. Not only take on, take another meaningful step towards reconciliation, but also further the important work of Casca language revitalization. I look forward to discussing this opportunity with you. Happy Chief Harland. I think this is an awesome opportunity, I know the Casca language group over there has been doing a lot of great work, so I would, uh, maybe we will set up or invite Chief Harland, Deputy Chief Harland to come and, uh, present his idea in person, maybe? And just give him some feedback on how we think that will go. Sound good?
Sounds great, when are we next due to, we just, we just replaced a bunch of signs like two years ago, right?
We replace, uh, signs as needed.
Okay.
But it is a huge expense for doing one off orders.
But we could, theoretically, we could get the made into like the stickers and put the stickers on the existing signs.
I think, I think also when I spoke with Chief Harland, that he has some ideas about funding. Cool. So we can do, he was pretty keen on the idea that he could find funding to help with signage, whether we are replacing or whether we're adding to what's existing.
I love it, I say let's do it all, let's do everything, change one leg, let's name everything.
Jointly, right?
I think.
And, and as we go, like, I think, we'll talk with him, let's get him here, well, I'll ask him to have something prepared for us as to what he can find for funding, what his idea was or he is, and maybe even have someone from the Casca language group with him so that they can kind of get some ideas. All right.
That sounds awesome.
All right.
But starting with the municipal, the fired building first.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be great. And that'd be the, you know, foundation to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's great.
Thanks, thank you. Uh, so, moving along, council forums done, gallery open forum, um, we have one member of the gallery for the first time since March twenty third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Actually, the only question I have is, does Northern Lights Center feed into the grid right now or not?
It's so minor that we have.
No, um, our solar at the, uh, Northern Lights Center feeds strictly into our panel. A little bit of electricity it produces is consumed by the building. And that's the same as the admin building, our solar panels in this building strictly feed back into our panels here because we consume more power than they could produce.
I'm sorry, that, um, fast charging thing doesn't be for our building at all, it's completely separate.
I can, I can, just for the record, I will say that the post-fast charging station, uh, is not connected to po, town power or town buildings and it is strictly the installation and the cost to run it are all Yukon government, which they got funding through the federal government to do installations in every community. So it will not in fact touch our O and M or our money at all, it's strictly for them to maintain and operate.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
But your race went up eleven percent.
Um, Janice has no comments.
That's right.
Uh, Terry and Ruth Wilkinson are ready to speak, I see that, go ahead, Ruth.
Um, I just was wondering if I could get my email, um, added to the Zoom notification, somehow I've been knocked off of that and I'm not getting it anymore. And I, the second question was, when will we be able to come to the council meetings? But I find out now we can, so, um, looking forward to seeing you in person, so.
Um, and just for your record, for the record, your worship, um, based on seating in here, we allow three people in gallery and you have to work with Tiffany in advance, but. We're taking reservations.
Is that all, Ruth?
Or bring cookies.
Oh.
That works.
That's just, that's a form of bribery, we can't allow that. Thanks, thanks, Ruth. All right, uh, Leela, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, um, I'm wondering, you mentioned the Northern Lights roof, do we know anything more about the rec center roof? And if that's gonna be repaired this year?
Cam had, Cam can speak to that.
Yeah, the never ending, uh, rec center roof, uh, yes, uh, the roof, we are trying to locate funding, uh, his worship wrote a letter to the Minister of Community Services regarding funding for the roof. Uh, the minister has made comments to council, well, instead of spending ten million dollars to fix the roof, he would rather replace the rec center, um, so we have not received an official response in either direction from Yukon government since the red, letter was written, um, but we do know that the only thing that, where it's gonna be feasible for this year is to do, is to make sure the patches that are in place are secure to get us through till next spring because there is no roofers available that will even come down to look at the roof this year. And then the other problem is the, even to do the front section of the building, the current estimates are over three million dollars to fix that roof. So, um, to answer your question, uh, there's no roof replacement at the rec center this year.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the question, Leela, uh, Patty, do you have any questions?
Hi, good evening, I just had a question about, um, about the recreation report on the lottery of funding. Is, is that list of, uh, uh, grants posted on the website?
Um, the application process, Patty?
No, the receipt.
Um, it will be in, in our minutes from the meeting and, uh, it will be posted, yes, with all the council, uh, synopsis from tonight. And, um, and the other thing that is available is a link to the actual, the auto recordings for the meetings. If anybody ever, you talk to anybody that wants to follow up or wasn't available to listen to the meetings, those recordings are also, uh, on the website. Uh, Tiffany's done a remarkable job of, um, getting our website in order and, uh, making sure the documentation is there and if there's something that somebody comes across that's missing, please give, uh, myself or Tiffany a call and we'll ensure it's, uh, posted.
Okay, thanks very much, now one other question on that, yeah, and, and that is whether or not any kind of rule or, uh, you know, obligation exists between the town and lotteries to return funding that isn't expended in any particular period of time? And if there is, uh, has that ever happened?
Yes and yes.
Yes, Patty, um, I think Council, Council Labonte answered, yes, um, yes, there is a requirement to return it if it isn't, uh, delegated by the end of the, the, the financial and it has happened in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Patty. Thanks, Patty. Okay. Just trying to hang up. Turning to you, yeah. Okay, well, with that, if there's nothing else from the gallery, we have no in camera and we just need a motion to adjourn.
A motion, I'll second that.
All in, all in favor? Gary?
To everybody.